I'd like to call for a Fairfield City Council meeting to order, please, for Tuesday, December 7.
Roll call, Councilmember Bertani.
Here.
Councilmember Moy.
Here.
Councilmember Panduro.
Here.
Councilmember Tim.
Here.
Councilmember Tonison.
Here.
Vice Mayor Vicaro.
Here.
And Mayor Price.
Here.
Thank you.
And we don't have Pastor Zacker, so let us all stand and bow our heads in memory of what happened 80 years ago in Honolulu. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Councilwoman Moy, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Yes, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we turn now to council reports, please. Mr. Vice Mayor, would you like to begin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and welcome everyone to the meeting tonight. I want to start out by just saying the Christmas tree lighting on the 3rd was, as always, really fantastic, and I want to thank everybody who participated and also everyone who helped put it together. It was always great to see the kids there and having a lot of fun. Also, I want to thank everybody in the community who's doing all the toy drives. I know there was one this weekend, OE3, and there's going to be one, Pastor Gilmore's having one, I believe, on this, is it this Saturday or this Friday? I'm not sure. It might be actually the 18th. I'm sorry. I think it's December 18th is when he's having one. And as always, Pastor Gilmore, being the champion that he is, is, you know, doing a great thing over there. But really, everybody who's, you know, giving back to the community, to such needy families. So I want to commend everybody, and please have everyone in their prayers. And just to end, the mayor brought up Pearl Harbor, and also, you know, I have friends and my wife has some family over in Hawaii, and they are witnessing some catastrophic storms over there right now and flooding. So, you know, our prayers go out to them, and hopefully they're going to be okay. So, Mayor, with that, I'm not going to wish everybody a Merry Christmas because I think we have one more meeting on the 21st, so I'll wait till then. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bertani, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, good evening. Thank you for coming out this evening. Thank you for watching from home. It's always better when you're here with us, so thank you. I just wanted to make a couple of announcements for the Clergy Action Network, the Fairfield CAN. It's a partnership between the senior pastors and churches here in Fairfield and the city of Fairfield, working together to provide needed services and information for the members of those congregations and for our community. So, at our last meeting, we met at the PAL Center, the Clergy Action Network met at the PAL Center, and had a fabulous tour. I want to thank Sergeant John Devine, I think I saw him in here, super awesome job, and Heather Sanderson, and Fatima Armstrong, and of course Chief Cantrell, who helped to put the tour together. It was great. And at the end of the tour, we decided that the Clergy Action Network members, the churches, are going to get together and to provide meals, prepare and serve up meals to the PAL Center kids or young adults who are at the PAL Center. We're going to be doing this on Thursday evenings, and depending on how many churches actually want to participate, we'll do it probably four times in the year of 2022. So the more churches we have participating, you know, it lessens the burden. So we'll do it around four times. If you are interested, if your church is interested, please contact the city, Kelly, really, Kelly Ballard, at 707-428-7400, okay? And this is important because we should not take food for granted. You know, we probably are all going to go home this evening and have a great meal or have already had one. Please don't take for granted the importance of feeding our PAL students. They're growing, you know, grown teenagers, and they're up there working really, really hard, and we want to build relationships. So if you're interested, please come out, really appreciate you doing it, and they're doing a great job at PAL, and it's just going to get better and better and better. And Dan Marshall also was there, and he is doing a lot of great work up at PAL. Our December 28th meeting is canceled. The pastors wanted to cancel that meeting. You wonder why? It's a busy time of year for those folks. And then we're going to have our January 25th meeting at Travis Air Force Base, and we're going to do that because we are, the Clergy Action Network, the city of Fairfield, we're reaching out and building relationships with our servicemen and women who are our heroes right here in the city of Fairfield. So, we're going to go out and really make a day of it. We're going to start out there at 10:00 a.m. We're going to meet some of the Air Force men and women, talk to them about their experiences. We'll share our experiences. At the end of the day, the goal is to make sure that our Air Force men and women know that they are a very integral part of this community, and that we're here for them 24/7 because they're there for us 24/7. So, it starts with relationship building, so that's what we'll be doing on January 25th. Once again, if your pastor of your church has not been attending, for whatever reason, the CAN meetings, please let them know, this is what we're doing. Contact me directly if you want to attend or contact Kelly. Just please be a part of this because we're doing really important work for the community. And then, I want to close with something kind of personal. This weekend, I experienced the city of Fairfield in a very unique way. For the first time in my life, I, Saturday morning, picked up a golf club, picked up some golf balls, went to Rancho Solano, and hit at the driving range. Now, my friend, because I'm going to master this game, and everybody laughs, but I'm going to, I'm going to do this. So, when I, you know, my friend Carol was there, and of course, she's a golf expert, and so she didn't let me hurt anyone, but I can tell you that it was a humbling experience, you know? You look at golf, you think, hit the freaking ball, right? I mean, just hit the ball. Wow. Whoa. So anyway, it was a very, so I'm committed, my heart's there, I am going to do it, but what I learned about when I was there is all the great work that's going on in this city around the game of golf and our youth. It's amazing. So here's what you have to know. Number one, what you're looking at is a picture from the Junior Club Membership Program. This program is for children from 6 to 17, is through the Fairfield Golf Academy, and they're offering 100% free, a one-year membership, to the first 60 children who show up, 100% free. You get lessons, you get clubs, I mean, everything is provided, free of charge. So if you know anyone or know of anyone who is like me, interested in upping my, well, I'm actually creating a golf game, I mean, I, you know, but anyone who's interested in having fun and playing golf and doing something great, this is free of charge, okay? So, there's also the Rancho Solano Women's Golf Club. This is amazing. This golf club, this women's golf club, is funding a group of golf lessons year-round for high school girls, and guess what? Next slide, please. There they are. Woo-hoo! This is the result of that effort. This group here has the Rodriguez, this is the Rodriguez Girls Golf Team, and they made the Northern California Finals in November of this year. No girls' or boys' team has ever made it that far. These young ladies did, and it's because of the lessons and the practice and the opportunity. This program does not have enough girls. Can you believe that? They're looking for young ladies, free of charge, to come and get lessons and play golf. So if I could be 17 again, you know, I'd be in good shape. But, so, if you're interested, please make sure that you reach out, I don't, oh, I don't have, oh, call the pro shop at Rancho Solano or Paradise Valley. Call the golf pro shop at Rancho Solano or Paradise Valley. If you're interested in the girls' program or in the Junior Club Membership Program, it's a great opportunity to get outside and to get in the fresh air. It was beautiful up there on Saturday morning. And so, I am, I'm going to be coming to you with updates on my golf game. So, laugh now, but I have, my putting green is in the mail. That's it, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Claus. Councilwoman Moy, your report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and that's going to be hard to follow, but I am going to follow that. With Councilwoman Panduro and I interviewed very qualified people for the Golf Advisory Board, and Carol and other women and men are a big part of that. And one of the things that they were all interested in, and what Councilwoman Panduro and I have stressed when we interview people, is that we want people in underserved areas to be able to go out on a golf course. And what Councilwoman Bertani was just talking about is a great way to do that. We need to get these young people out there, and sadly, you know, these great people up here have donated, bought new clubs and so on, and we don't have enough people. At Armio High, Fairfield High, hello, hello out there, you know, let's get together with these people, they're going to help you a lot. And, so, anyway, we chose somebody, and the mayor went ahead and okayed that, and so we'll meet her soon, and it was exciting. The other thing is, I want to follow up with the vice mayor said, and that is, our city is so, so generous. People are unbelievable. You just have to ask and they will do. And I know you're doing a great job with CAN and other churches, and people will get involved making those meals, and I appreciate you doing that, really, a lot. And I appreciate what the vice mayor said, and that is, so many people are getting together toy drives and clothing drives. One of the things that the principal, David Weir, I think I brought this up before, is she was having a pajama drive and a drive for blankets. And yes, there are some schools where we have underprivileged children who need pajamas, and she's doing great. We've, I put it all over social media, and literally hundreds of people have signed up to do it, and I want to thank all of you. And I want to thank people who do it year-round because you're out there and you keep it going. And so, just always makes me proud to be from here. The other thing is, we, for the first time ever, of course, we had the tree lighting, and this year, we had a menorah lighting. And I again want to thank my colleagues for agreeing with me to go ahead and move forward with this, and I wanted to, it turned out great, by the way. It was exciting, it was fun. We had the fire department there raining candy down on the kids, it was awesome. And I wanted to thank Kelly Ballard for all of her work, really, to get this done, to turn it around. Debbie Tevey, and also, City Manager Stefan Chatwin, he did a lot of work on this, and then also, our citizen who worked with me directly, and that's Josef Levy. He did a great job, and everybody who showed up, including my colleagues, it was wonderful. And then the last thing I have, Mr. Mayor, is last night, I was really honored to be out in Cordelia and sit on an Eagle Board. And an Eagle Board is when, and the mayor does this often as well, is when you sit down and a prospective Eagle Scout, which is a super, super high-ranking thing, very rare, actually, they come before you after their 11, 12 years, or whatever it's been of working in Scouts, to present what they've done to earn the Eagle Scout. And I'm so proud to announce that Tyler Walker is our most recent Eagle Scout from the Chief Solano area of the Scouts, and we had a great time last night, and that young man is unbelievable. What he did was went to Green Valley Middle School and took care of all the benches there that had been shredded down to almost nothing. Paint was, it was a mess. And so, they went in and they recovered those, and then he made a very artistic Viking, which is, you know, yeah, and sprayed it all, and the benches are gorgeous. And so, it was a lot of work. He had help from his grandpa was there, his mom, dad, never seen so many people in the family show up for the board, but it was wonderful and so good to see really so many young people excited about doing really great things. And that's it, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Tim, please.
Yeah, just real quickly, we've been to a ton of things, and I think the ton of things finally caught up with me. I don't, I'm having a hard time with my voice, but, and you listen, and Pam, you had me at golf. You had me at golf. But I think what everybody says is, this is the time of year where the need becomes very evident, and it also becomes very evident that people do open up their hearts, and just to keep it up. And I've seen a lot of you, we've seen a lot of you probably four or five times this past week with all the events, so please keep them coming, and, Mayor, thank you, sir. Thank you.
Councilman Tonison, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I want to give a shout-out to the Christmas tree lighting, to Debbie Tevey and the Public Works did some outstanding work. And I just want to, this is Councilmember, you may not know this, but we're coming up on a year here, next week will be a year that we've been on the council. So I just wanted to share with you a little bit about what I've learned. Government moves slow. But the great thing is, you know, we really enjoy, we interact with the staff quite a bit, and we really enjoy that. They're good, hard-working folks, and I'm really happy that, for a lot of the work that they do. We've viewed many, many buildings. Fairfield has, we've probably been on a dozen or more views of buildings, fire departments, police departments, water treatment, sewer, and we're going to keep doing that. The other thing that I've noticed, and I was doing it before I became a council member, was the volunteering for the hours. We have so many volunteers in this city, and when you're behind the scenes, you really see it happen, you know, at the parades and certainly at the Tomato Festival, so it's nice that we have so many city volunteers, and that's something that impresses me to this day. So, I just wanted to give a shout-out for that. Mayor, I'm going to ask that we poll item 3, 3 or 4, or both, and that's my comments. Thank you.
We will poll item 3?
Yes, for a specific action.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Panduro, please.
Thank you, Mayor. So, as we've been mentioning, we've had a lot of events going on, and they will continue in the holiday season, and I, along with my colleagues, have visited and gone to several this past week, and will continue to be at them during this month. And so my thank you goes to all the staff. And so my thank you goes to all the staff, PD, fire, Public Works, because those events do not just happen overnight. It takes a lot of work and timing and planning. And as Councilmember Tonison was saying, having been now in the background, you realize all the work that does go into those events. And I just wanted to send a thank you because I have been, I've seen many of you at many events and it's, it's awesome. But it just gives me a lot of gratitude for the community that we are in and the staff that we have and the passion and dedication they have to this community to make sure that our community has events to go to. And events that are fun and engaging and they bring people together. The menorah lighting, the Christmas tree lighting, the toy run, the, there's so many things and it's just beautiful and awesome. And so thank you to everyone that has, has partaken this year and, and will continue to do so. I also wanted to give a shout out to, I, I actually had a, an opportunity to go to visit Early College High School over at Solano College. They invited me last week, I want to say. And they had their eleventh and twelfth graders give presentations on the general plan. So it was interesting and I loved it because students who were, you know, loving the twelfth graders, they had the opportunity, they kind of picked apart the general plan, they each chose a topic, everything from transportation to homelessness to everything you can think of, that was, that's in our general plan. And they gave their own ideas and take on what they wanted to see in the general plan. And it was, it was great because it engaged them in a way that they might not have in the past. They had great presentations, they showed great data, they took pictures, they gave their recommendations and, you know, most of it, you know, great, maybe not all feasible. But I appreciated that they took the time to, you know, and that the teacher, it was actually Noah Rumbia, he's actually one of our General Plan Advisory Committee members who has been working with the students. And so myself and there was other members, elected officials there and teachers that gave them feedback. So that was the best part, we got to kind of give them feedback and ask questions. And I know some of them were a little nervous, but I think that helps when you're learning how to do public speaking and showing and presenting. So it was really good practice for them and also good practice for myself to be able to see what our youth think and feel and want for where they live and for the future. So I really appreciated that opportunity. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And I should like to acknowledge that our acting city manager, his first Fairfield City Council meeting is today. So David, thank you very much for stepping up. And I think that's a wonderful accomplishment for you, sir. And looking forward to what happens as we continue to develop as a city of Fairfield and we get to grow. On Saturday, I was very privileged to go over to the Aquatic Center. And you say, why do you, were you privileged to go to the Aquatic Center? Because it was Santa splash time. And what an incredibly wonderful experience that was to watch children of all ages and their parents and other relatives there having a good time. And it reminded me that Fairfield, along with Vallejo and a couple of other cities in this area, are among the most diverse in these United States. And that was well represented on Saturday with all of those in the pool. And one of the highlights for me, I stayed there longer than I really should have because I had another obligation, but one of the highlights was the buckets that are slowly being filled with water and then they tip over. Well, watching little guys. What a thrill it was. And there were some toddlers there who wanted to do that too. And fortunately, their parents held them up so that they could do it. What a great experience that was. And then, of course, went out to Jelly Belly Saturday evening, or Sunday evening for the lighting of the Hanukkah. And that was an incredibly important experience for me. Not because I hadn't done it before, but because I was surprised how many people from Solano County of the Jewish faith were there. And they turned that food court into a Hanukkah celebration. And the food was absolutely outstanding. I tried my best to get Councilman Tonison to spend a bit more time, but he had pressing obligations. And this evening, let me remind you, we had Colonel Corey Simmons here last meeting, the last city council meeting. And I was privileged to go out there for the wing commander's Christmas, little Christmas celebration. And not to get your excitement building too quickly here, there is a possibility that the Thunderbirds may be coming to Travis Air Force Base again this year. And then finally, have you been down to the dog parks out in Cordelia or at Allenwood Park? Well, I am amazed at the number of people of all ages who take great joy in visiting the dog parks with their dogs. So, Mr. City Manager, your report, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just building on some of the comments from council for the Christmas tree lighting ceremony, I thought that went very well. That was my first experience and certainly I had my kids out there and they had a blast. They really enjoyed the snow that was, that was being blasted everywhere all over the street. And also for the menorah lighting, I want to give a special recognition to our Public Works staff, especially our operations staff, Daniel Kamara, Paul Sloan, Brian Garcia and Vince Brooks. There was a lot of effort to get the menorah up in time for that event and, and they, they delivered. And so, you know, some of those unsung heroes behind the scenes, I just want to make sure that they're recognized. We, if anybody has gone to our website recently, you'll have noticed it looks a little bit different. And so the new website is up and operational. And so special thanks to Bill Way and our marketing and outreach division and all of the employees in the city that have spent many hours pulling that all together. Anytime you go through a new website, that is a monumental undertaking. And so everyone has performed spectacularly to get that up. Last week, we had a West Texas Complete Streets project briefing with the public. It was held on Zoom. I know a couple of council members were in attendance at that. Ultimately, that project is going to be improving safety on West Texas by adding bike lanes, wider sidewalks. It's going to be improving, you know, overall, the look and feel of West Texas Street between Pennsylvania and Beck Avenue. I know that's a project that's in the heart of Fairfield's specific plan and has been a long time in the making. Public Works was very fortunate through their hard work to get some funding to accelerate our effort in doing that. And so if anybody from the public wants information, you can go to the website, we have a specific page for that, fairfield.ca.gov/complete and all of the information on that project that will be kicking off in late 2022. And then lastly, through lots of good and hard work from our finance staff, a conversation from council a few months back related to delayed water bills. So due to, due to our staff's continued efforts in working with the state of California, we, we were awarded nearly $500,000 in arrears payments through some of the funding that's rolling out through the state. And these funds will assist approximately 1,600 water account holders who were, who had accumulated debts through the pandemic, through COVID-19. And so in the next couple of weeks, our, our revenue division will be going through to apply those credits and help those most in need right now get, get up to speed on their water bills. And that's my report. Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney, your report, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Couple items to discuss. First of all, we'd like to pull item number four on the Paradise Valley Maintenance and Monitoring District. There were some changes to the minutes, so we just need to put that on the record. And then out of the closed session that was held at 4:30 this afternoon, I'm reporting out pursuant to government code 54957.1 subsection A2, that the city council gave authority to legal counsel to defend the city in an action brought by East of Eden North Bay LLC in Solano County Superior Court, case number FCS 057389, related to a challenge to the application process for cannabis retail license. And that was item number three on the closed session. And the city council also gave authority to legal counsel to defend the city in an action brought by CCC Associates of Fairfield Incorporated, Solano County Superior Court, case number FCS 057154, also a challenge arising out of a permit or application process for cannabis retail license. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, your report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank the 60th Logistics Readiness Squadron, Fuels Management Flight of Travis Air Force Base, as they have adopted a section of Peabody Road. And one other item. Well, I seem to, oh, here it is. Just, I wanted to, Communications Division keeps asking me to let people know how to keep in touch with the city of Fairfield or how to become aware of what's going on. So out in the lobby, there are magnets and flyers. And we're on social media, we're on Facebook, we're on Instagram, Twitter. You can subscribe to our brand new website, various pages. Anytime there's a new press release posted, you will, you'll be notified. Of course, we have our channels, 26, 27, and 28. We have an iPod called Ways with Words. And I think I'm probably forgetting one or two other ways. But anyway, there are a variety of ways you can find out what's going on in Fairfield. And that's my report.
And then Madam Clerk, if you'd introduce presentations, please.
Yes. Presentation one, the swearing in ceremony of Alex Crutchfield to the California Bar Association by our very own Mayor Harry Price.
A bit of sweet history here. Ten, eleven years ago, there were two brothers in the city of Fairfield who served on the Youth Commission. And the highlight tonight of that experience is the result of what happened years ago when the then mayor Chuck Hammond said to our community, we need to have a youth commission that would report directly to the city council. So 10, 11 years ago, there were two guys, and they're here this evening, Alex and Andrew Crutchfield. Would you stand up, please? Andrew, stand up also, please. And this is a bit of reflected glory. I'm a retired teacher and they weren't my students. But teachers oftentimes, like Rick Vaccaro, live in reflected glory. So what Chuck Hammond started really reached an apex. So tonight, I'm going to administer the oath of office for the State Bar of California. Would you raise your right hand, please? Yeah.
I love a good photo op. Thank you.
Let me repeat, this is the State Bar of California oath. Would you raise your right hand? I state your name, please.
I, Alexander Crutchfield.
solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of an attorney and counselor at law.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of an attorney and counselor at law.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
As an officer of the court.
Oh, as an officer of the court.
I will strive to conduct myself at all times.
I will strive to conduct myself at all times.
With dignity, courtesy, and integrity.
With dignity, courtesy, and integrity.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I actually, I actually found this.
Madam Clerk.
You can just get signed here. I'm actually using male, male mail, mail this in. It's a rare thing these days. I just want to give two thank yous, first of which is to Mayor Price. Really, in my career in law, I wish to emulate Mayor Price's dedication to public service. He's really been a hero in my life growing up, as he talked about with the Youth Commission, but even beyond that. I think he's really a model of public service. And as a proud CUMC alumnus, The Late Wife Two is also a, a really big hero to me. Number two, it's not glib to say, it takes a village, my lovely family here, my lovely friends here, a couple of teachers in the audience. And, you know, I'm a proud, you know, resident of Fairfield and this just seems like a culmination. So thank you so much for this opportunity, guys, and thank you, Mayor Price.
Introduce your family.
Oh, yes. Let me introduce my family. We're some lovely people. And the lovely lady in green is my mother, Cindy Crutchfield. The man who doesn't look like me at all is my brother Andrew Crutchfield. And the gentleman behind him is my lovely father, Brad Crutchfield. Hey, thank you guys so much.
And I must tell you that when I received that information from him and his request, I thought, well, wouldn't it be appropriate to do this oath of office before our Youth Commission? So we may want to do it again at a Youth Commission meeting.
I'm always going to make a guest appearance and I love the Youth Commission. It's very special. Thank you very much, Mayor Price.
And thank you.
And our second presentation is the Veterans Day Parade Awards. And our presenter will be the Director of Parks and Recreation, Christina Chamberlain.
Actually, I have Andrea Azurdia, who is our Special Events Coordinator, who's going to assist with handing out the awards. And again, this is the winners from the Veterans Parade, and in no particular order. We have the first award going for Best Commercial Entry is awarded to Medic Ambulance. So congratulations. And I'm not sure if we have a representative here tonight to accept. If not, we will make sure that they receive that. Next, who I do not believe we have anybody here for the Best Band, Armio Superband. And then Best Military Entrance, Entry was American Army Museum. So we do have a representative here. So congratulations. So all the entries are 150. Okay. And then, I'm sorry, the next one will be the Best Entry in the Vehicle category, which is going to North Bay Cruisers. And I believe they indicated that they would not be able to attend either, but congratulations to them. So round of applause. And then I do believe we have a representative here for the Best Walking Entry Group was the Girl Scouts of Northern California. So each of the entry winners received, in addition to their plaque, a cash award of $150. So we have two special acknowledgements. And so Best Use of Theme was awarded to Roland Freedom Center. And I believe we have a representative here. And then drum roll, please. Our Sweepstakes winner went to B Sharp Academy. And those special awardees also received a plaque, but also a cash award of $250. So we congratulate each of you and thank everybody for participating and coming out to support the event. And want to give special thank you to Juanita Johnson, who is hiding in the corner there, our superintendent who oversees our special events. And then Andrea is new to our department, so this was one of her first full blown events. So congratulations to her for well done.
Thank you. Public comments, Madam Clerk, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Persons wishing to address the city council on subjects not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. The council cannot discuss or take action on matters not on the agenda for this meeting, but council members may briefly respond to statements made or questions raised by the public. Ask for clarification from staff, refer the matter to staff, request staff to report back to the council at a subsequent meeting, or place the matter on a future agenda. To speak on an agenda item... To speak on an agenda item, if you haven't already done so, please complete a speaker's card and give it to me. When joining via Zoom, please use the Raise Your Hand feature, or press *9 on your phone to request to speak. Speakers are limited to three minutes per item. Thank you. And I only have one card so far. The others are for Item Three, Brian Lynch, for public comment. And then, I will check in back to see if anyone is on Zoom.
I hate to follow that, because you all know that we need to follow the good with the bad and reverse, but, "Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I've returned for Part Two. I'm going to read this time. I have a quick recap from my last episode. I did some work, got some feedback, and man expressed, 'It's about time.' I offered some corresponding issues of fencing and disrepair, and full garbage cans related to the dirty crossing signs on East Tabor, and here we are tonight. I understand you spend a tremendous amount of money on fence repair and keeping this city clean, but what is the true cost when that amount is not effective? Is it the reason for this man's statement of resentment? Are there other residents holding on to this resentment? How are we being affected? This is my second time down here. Did work on a Sunday morning. How is the community being affected by these issues? I don't know. Fortunately, I don't have to know, and that's where I believe there's been a failure. These lingering issues influence the behaviors that lead to crime, mental illness, and homelessness. We need to be on top of these issues. They can't be allowed to fester. We need to fix this. It's time. Here's what I ask of you, because you can change this. I've included the timeline. That's for my benefit. Sounds better. You'll have to find the budget. Schedule a monthly checking and cleaning of crossing safety signs. Those garbage cans get filled every two weeks. Empty them every week. The Claybank Fence, it's garbage. Can't be repaired. Get rid of it. I understand East Tabor is supposed to be repaired, repaved, in the next one to three years. I ask you to push, pull, kick, grab, throw for one year. It's time. That community has been degraded for too many years. Lastly, let's finish with a refurbishment of that basketball court on Tabor Park. First, add some bushes with pink and white roses, because there ain't no thug that's going to be thugging around pink and white roses. That park needs to be, I got it, that park needs to be softened. It's a hardcore park. Then, paint the surface, add new posts, get some glass backboards, and then open it up to the community with all its fanfare, and introduce yourself. This needs to get done, because it's about time. Thank you for your attention. I look forward to the progress. I'll be back in two weeks for Part Three.
Thank you.
Did anyone else want to make a public comment? Brian, is there anyone on Zoom that would like to make a public comment?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We do have a Zoom public comment, and we have Edward Russell, Edward Russell, Jr. You are unmuted and ready to go. You have three minutes.
So, to follow really quick, the gentleman just spoke outstanding job. Thank you for what you do. You do more than the vermin that make up this outside of Councilwoman Pandur, the vermin. Really quick, that light, that stoplight that's at Tabor and Grande Circle, you can thank my wife for that, because no one else decided to do anything, residents in that area. Two people got hit, so my wife had to get that done. Fact-check that if you want to. Google search that, but you vermin probably don't even care about that. So, anyway, really quick, what I find interesting is that the vermin that make up the City Council have allowed Finn, the ex-chief, to walk away, the racist city manager, Chatwick, or whatever, Stefan, Stephanie, to walk away, and no one had to suffer any consequences for allowing hate crime after hate crime to manifest itself in the City of Fairfield. And, under that watch, you brought in a chief that has violated other citizens' civil rights and hired a known murderer on your law enforcement. So, I can see how you guys are getting rid of the dirty laundry that make up your little vermin nest right there of racists and bigots. So, I expect some more of you guys to start resigning or falling off sometimes, so, which would be wonderful, thank God. The other thing I find absolutely as funny is when that old white guy, the mayor, is praised for all his work in the community, I hear him on the radio, "Oh, look at me, I'm at the Levin, I'm helping these poor kids." Talk is cheap. Dude, all you do is talk. You haven't helped nobody. Let me tell you, your resources are far more bigger than mine. I run my own nonprofit. My operating budget this past year was about $2,000. With $2,000, I have given free math tutoring to every student that has come to me, which is over 50 in one year, free math tutoring. I watch grades go from Cs to As. That talks a lot about your teachers in your city. Also, what's funny is I've given away one scholarship.
Mr. Russell, would you conclude, please?
Oh, yeah, not a problem. Anyway, I'm just saying, as still a man that I am, I'm doing much more than this collective unit of vermin that sits up there in front of you right now. You know what? I'm trying to be nice. I hope you guys have a great evening. Rest well in your privilege.
Okay, Brian, was anyone else on Zoom?
And we have no further requests to speak on Zoom at this time.
Okay, thank you.
I will then convene the meeting of the Paradise Valley Maintenance and Monitoring District, please.
Okay. I did have a question, because I know Scott mentioned he wanted to continue Item Three. Oh, pull it, pull Item Three, just for discussion, you mean? Oh, okay. Thank you. I'll read the statement. All matters listed on the consent calendar are to be approved with one motion unless a member of the PVMMD or the public requests that separate action be taken on a specific
And Madam Clerk, do you have it?
Good evening, Chair Price and Board Members. Ryan Pung and Eben, I'm the district engineer. So, I wanted to provide a brief status update as to where we are with the PVMMD, as well as share a background on staff's recommendation tonight to execute the two new consultant-service agreements with NGO. So, first, I wanted to provide the board an update to potentially changing the composition of who serves as the board and the mechanism for that change. So, staff and the city attorney have been coordinating on this effort, and the board should have received an invitation for a workshop, which is scheduled for December 21st. So, the intent of the workshop is to review potential options and provide a tentative implementation schedule. In advance of this workshop, we'll be sending mailers to the district property owners and meeting with our resident ad hoc committee to gather their input. So, we look forward to meeting and discussing this topic with you in a couple of weeks. So, switching gears a bit, some of you may recall earlier this year, the board executed two agreements with Cal Engineering and Geology. So, their work included conducting an evaluation of the existing condition of the district, providing recommendations for an appropriate maintenance budget, and updating the 2018 reserve study. So, staff's priority over the past several months has been completing this work with CE and G. And as the board is aware, the timely completion of this comprehensive technical analysis is vital for us to make an appropriate assessment level within the district. And while CE, excuse me, Cal Engineering and Geology has provided good support for staff as a technical subject matter expert, they unfortunately have failed to meet numerous project deadlines and have not provided any remedies to correct our current critical path schedule. So, staff and our ad hoc committee, consisting of two residents, determined that terminating CE and G's contract was the only path forward, and recommending tonight that we execute a contract with the next qualified geotechnical consultant, which is NGO. While this change is unanticipated, it comes at a critical juncture for the district, as we expect NGO to have their review completed of the reserve fund study and these technical documents in advance of setting the upcoming fiscal year 22, 23 assessment level. So, that concludes my presentation tonight. And again, our action is to approve these two contracts with NGO, to first, provide the day-to-day technical support, and second, to provide the necessary evaluation of the district's formation documents.
Any comments or questions, colleagues? Entertainer motion, then, to approve the consent calendar as submitted.
Any public comment, Ms. Mayor?
I have two public comments.
Good evening, everyone. In reference to, I'm going to be speaking on the agreements with the, what you guys are going to be voting on for NGO. I read through it, and one of the things in the scope of work that's not there that we had requested CE and G to do is to go back, not only do the reserve and the assessment fee, but to go back in history and look at the performance, do a performance audit from the reserve fund from its inception. And I didn't see that. I'm hoping that's going to be included as part of the scope of work, because that is one of the things I've been talking to you guys about, at least this is the third time I've been up here before you, that the reserve fund and how it got funded is not equal, there's no equitability across the residents. It has to, there needs to be an audit, a performance audit, to show how it originally got funded, to the lack of expenses, but the taxpayers kept getting, had to pay an increase in fees every year. A very short, the original budget called for $213,000 to be collected each year, and that would be for, to include $23,000, for reserve accumulation over a 40-year period. However, $170,000 of that was for NGO, yeah, NGO, the engineering, to basically run the program. That didn't happen. When you take that out of the equation, the yearly expense on average over, from 2010 to 2020, is $42,000 instead of the $213,000. But we've paid as if we were had to, at the 213 level, 213,000 level. So, we have consistently overpaid every year. My calculations is, on average, for those 10 years, is $332,000 per year. However, on average, I've paid $1,071. So, I'm overpaying $700, over $700 per year, and I've lived there since 2012. So, what happens is, everyone who's lived there for the last 10 years is paying about 85, has paid 85% of the current reserve fund. That is benefiting people that will live there for the next 30 to 40 years.
And would you conclude, please?
Certainly. So, residents that have been overtaxed since the inception of the program, money taken should not be retained, but be rebated, and I'm asking for the performance audit to be added, so that the engineer can address this issue in the scope of work. Thank you.
And the next speaker is Richard Johnson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Quick aside from my topic, the freedom of speech allows people to say almost anything. I see no vermin here. I see dedicated individuals that are putting their lives on hold for everybody else. Does that mean they're perfect? No. Does that mean they'll make mistakes? Potentially. There are no vermin in this room. Thank you for your service. Theta and I continue to communicate with the residents of the GAD. We want to keep them informed of the process of the review and the correction to the GAD that's taking place. Our goal has always been to pay the right amount of money to maintain our hill, whatever that is. We assembled a steering committee of residents to discuss the question that was brought up at the last board meeting about taking over the board as residents. And I didn't want this to be the Rick Johnson program. This is the resident program. So, when we had our meeting, it went long, and to a person, they don't want it. They do not want to do this. They do trust you for that, but they are looking at the situation as being, needing the professional organization, and as Ryan's request is, the new company will provide day-to-day assistance, they will provide oversight, they will provide continuity of the program, which will be a tremendous assistance to extremely overworked Public Works Department. And again, my personal belief is the reason we had the failures is due to tremendous overwork. It's not failures on anybody's part intentionally, it's oversight, because they're just so dang busy. And I do thank them for the hard work that they do. We've had problems in making due dates, we've had problems in getting things done. We're way behind, frustratingly so. Jump to the next part. One thing I did ask them, and I'm passing it on to you, because they are not empowered to be able to do so, a GAD lawyer that exists to help and provide information. The citizens, if we had someone who's giving us also support and information, who's familiar with the GAD process, the one I'm talking about is a GAD lawyer for Blackhawk. She's also the GAD lawyer for the City of Vacaville, for Lagoon Valley. Just to ensure that we're not missing anything, I'm looking for ways to incorporate our people into believing the process again, because there is no credibility here on the parts of the residents. They do not want to deal with what's been going on. So, one of the processes that's going to help is if we are able to engage the services of this person. I'm going to jump right over to it. Theta did a good job of explaining the basic problem, but basically, we've paid money that should have stopped being paid, and the frustration is that nobody stopped it. And then, a report was there provided by NGO, saying, "Please stop it," or, "Please reduce it," or, "You can reduce your tax, because you have done well to fund everything."
And would you conclude, Chair?
Something this up. The residents want to pay the right amount of the money to take care of the hill. A steering committee advised that it's not likely that the residents will want to take over the district board. The residents do need to be surveyed to identify their actual, I mean, all the residents need to be surveyed to identify their desires, so that we know exactly what's going on. Day-to-day operations, as we're talking about annual reports, presentations, biannual inspections, being handled by the professional company, NGO, is perfect. That's exactly going to take care of it. And the thing we would ask also, going forward, again, to help continuity and believability and credibility, that a resident committee be recognized as a stakeholder and representatives, and included in the process of some sort going forward, so that there is hands-on there. They don't need to vote, they just need to be there to help, to discuss, to share what's going on in their lives with their program. With that, again, I'm looking for your support in that, and I am totally supporting these two resolutions. This is a good company. I voted for them, actually, when we were deciding. Not that I'm right, or all the time, but I try to be.
Thank you.
But I want to say thank you very much for your attention, and again, for your hard work.
Councilman Tim, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I thought six or eight months ago, maybe I was confused, I thought we were going to do this. And I understand it's easy for us to say, "Do this," because I'm not quite sure, because I heard something new tonight, where, "Ma'am, it sounds like you want to rebate." But whatever it is, so, Ryan, you heard what they had to say, and instead of me fumbling for the questions, you're probably going to know the answers to what I ultimately would come out of my mouth, so let me know.
Yes. So, the, can you hear me okay?
Yes, so the, can you hear me okay? You can hear me okay? There you go. So with respect to the performance audit as requested by Theta, one of the key factors that's going to play into that equation is this reserve study that we needed to have be completed previously earlier this year with Cal Engineering Geology. And that work hasn't been completed. So now we have a consultant on board. We've terminated that contract in October and now we've brought in to you, the board, as quickly as possible, a new agreement so that we could have that work completed in time as we reevaluate the appropriate assessment levels. This past performance audit, as Theta is referring to, we could certainly include that as part of NGO's work and we're in fact kicking off that, having a kickoff meeting with the residents and NGO in the upcoming weeks.
Okay, and I'm sure then too, then the request then for a GAD lawyer, and I was unclear on who was going to pay for that, the GAD, certainly wouldn't fall into the purview, I wouldn't think, of the city attorney. So there's probably some things that are going to be worked out, I would assume, and it, I'm not going to tell you it's going to be handled by next week or next month. I think we're getting there, but I just want to make sure that the questions they come and ask us, that we got them and we'll have an answer. So that's where we're at. Does that make sense? David, I can see you got, David L., did you have a question?
I was mainly gonna ask, do we have any Zoom comments for this item?
I do not have, just those two. Brian, are there any people on Zoom that want to speak on item three?
I'll go ahead and check in with our Zoom participants. If anyone would like to speak on this item, feel free to use the raise your hand feature at this time. And seeing none, looks like we have no speakers.
Okay, thank you.
I'm gonna entertain a motion then to approve.
Just, I'm sorry. I just want, I'm sorry, Mayor, I just want to clarify that we understand their questions or concerns and that we will address them whether they like our answers or not, but they'll get addressed and when they come back, we're not kind of giving them that deer in headlights look. So, and I understand your time constraints too, Ryan, I'm not telling you when.
Yes.
Just to make sure that you guys are actually talking peer-to-peer, level-to-level.
No, absolutely. We'll make sure that we follow through on the request for the performance audit and the next steps forward as it pertains to the transition of the current structure.
Got it. Okay. All right. Thank you very much, it was a good presentation.
Any other comments? Councilman Tonison, please.
How many houses are out there again? Remind me.
It's about 200, currently as it's formed, it's about 230, 250 homes.
And do they have an HOA?
No, sir.
Thank you. Rick, I'll talk with you later.
Any other comments or questions? Entertain a motion then to approve the consent calendar as submitted and moved by Councilman Tim, seconded by Councilwoman.
Actually, just for clarification, this would be a motion only as to item three, which are two resolutions which can be made with one motion, and that's resolution 2021-06 and 2021-07.
Been moved by Councilman Tim, seconded by Councilwoman Moy. All in favor?
Opposed.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. We turn now to the consent calendar, please.
I'm sorry, we still have item number four, which are the minutes for the PV MMD, which I asked to be pulled. Board and Chair, we asked for this to be pulled because we had submitted meeting minutes for July 6, 2021 and July 20, 2021. Earlier today, there were some corrections made by staff to some, just some clerical errors in the typing of the minutes, and so they updated those minutes. We put copies on your dais with the updated minutes that we're asking you to approve and we also put copies out front for the public to review. That's the only reason we pulled the site. Comments? You do need to ask for public comments, sorry.
Are there any public comments for item four? And Brian, is anyone on Zoom that would like to speak on item four?
There are no speakers at this time.
Thank you.
So I will entertain a motion to approve. Moved by Councilwoman Moy, seconded by Councilman Tim. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Now we turn to the consent calendar, please, Madam Clerk.
All matters listed on the consent calendar are to be approved with one motion unless a member of the city council or the public requests that separate action be taken on a specific item.
Then moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilman Tim. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
I just wanted to check that there's no one on Zoom that wants to speak on the consent calendar. Brian, can you ask? I don't have any cards here.
We have no speakers at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we turn to new business, please.
Yeah, item, whoops, I just lost my note.
Item 13, discussion and direction of the city council regarding attendance requirements for planning commissioners. And our presenter is Acting City Manager David Gassaway.
Yes, thank you very much. This item was requested by Councilmember Tonison and placed on the agenda at the, at that request by the mayor. I will turn it over to Councilmember Tonison for a discussion about planning commission attendance requirements.
Thank you, David. Yeah, so I wanted to bring this back again. The attendance has continued and I think what we're, what we're seeing is just a culture here that, when I was on the planning commission, it was very rare to have, or let's not say very rare, but it was rare to have seven members consistently show up. I'm not mad at all at anybody. It's just that if you don't have time to serve, then, you know, the, unlike some of the committees, there's people standing in line to be on the planning commission. We get eight, 10, 12, 15 people all the time that want to serve. And I just want to institute a little, you know, two unexcused absences. We have an average of 11 to 13 meetings a year. In the last year, we've had full meetings 31% of the time. And I'm just using Vacaville because they're the closest city. Their numbers are inverted from that. They're 80, 85% full all the time. So it's not punishing anybody, it's just setting a standard for, you know, two unexcused absences, I think is fair. I haven't punched a clock since I was a kid working for the city of Fairfield, but I'm thinking if you're missing 30 to 40% of your work, you're probably not gonna stay employed. But I just wanted to reach out, bring this back to you guys again. I think it's reasonable and I hope that you'll agree.
Vice Mayor?
So Councilman Tonison, so you're saying that, but two unexcused absences, so they can have excused absences.
Yes, of course. Yeah, and the unexcused is gonna be a, I would hope that an unexcused is gonna be a one-off, but yeah, if there's something.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. I understand that the attendance has been bad too, so.
Any other comments? Councilwoman Moy, please.
I agree with Councilman Tonison on this for unexcused absences. We do always have a pretty healthy line of folks, as you know, Mr. Mayor, who want to serve this city on the planning commission. So I all support what Scott's looking at right here, I think it's right. Yeah.
Councilman Tim, please.
Yeah, I don't know until I just ask Councilman Tonison what we pay our planning commissioners. It's 30 or 35 bucks a meeting. Okay, 35.
35 a meeting.
Obviously, that needs to be raised and in talking, we either get a bigger carrot or a bigger stick. But it's unfair, I think, to, to the council and to developers and think people that have things going through the planning commission because we don't know all the ins and outs of what goes on in the planning commission. We look for their report and when it comes to us and it's either incomplete or it doesn't get done or they shuffle it off the buffalo thinking that we'll handle it, yeah, it's categorically unfair. So I'd like to explore two things. I'm very happy with two unexcused and we'll find somebody that wants to work, but I think we also too then should pay a fair stipend and we can discuss that at a later date. The ones that work, the ones that show up, they do a good job, but there's what, seven? And I'd like to, you know, pretty much have seven people's opinions on and, you know, take small projects, say like, well, one, I see one lake sitting here. Take any of them, from Sino to Lewis, these are massive projects and we need their input. So I absolutely agree.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a point, since council is starting to weigh in on their preference for this?
Go ahead.
I'm looking at Fairfield Municipal Code 2.24.1, which is the code that would need to be amended for failure to attend meetings. And as Councilmember Tonison correctly points out, right now, the wording is, any planning commission who fails to attend three consecutive regular meetings or five regular meetings in any 12-month period without consent of the planning commission will be subject to removal by the city council. I'd only ask, as you're giving direction to staff, if your direction is to make this change, what do you mean by unexcused? Who will make that excuse? Is it the planning commission who can approve the excuse or are you thinking of some other person? Just for clarification for staff.
I would say, I would say the chair. The planning commission.
Is gonna determine if it's unexcused or not?
Yeah.
David, can you, can, me and you had talked earlier, it's something that you can get involved in too, well, in your disposition. Would you just run it through the chair?
Yeah, I think we would, we can figure out some process before we bring the ordinance back that would be fair for someone to basically report that they're gonna be absent. I know it's very common in boards where a member might, you know, announce at a prior meeting that they're gonna be absent and sort of get.
Correct.
From the board that, you know, yeah, that's okay, we understand, as opposed to, you know, just a no-show or, you know, a last-minute call, hey, I'm not gonna be there. And that's something that we can, we can put that language together and come up with something that's, you know, fair and workable for all.
And then I just wanted to point out to council again, it's not a particular planning commission, it's, because I want in the future, when we have separate, seven representatives, I'd like to have consistently seven representatives. So I'm trying to look down the road, five, 10 years and, you know, just set up, set up some standards. So thank you again very much.
Councilman Ton, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree, Scott, I mean, Councilman Tonison, I agree with this conceptually for sure, for all the reasons you said. I think that we need to articulate clearly what an unexcused absence is and not leave it to the discretion of some chair of the board to determine whether something is excused or unexcused. We need to have a very clear standard. This is what, like, the question is, what constitutes an unexcused absence? I don't think that should be left to the discretion of a chair. I think that should be in the amended statute very clearly. Otherwise, I agree 100%.
And maybe even when we're, we're maybe not setting it up in advance, telling a planning commissioner what we expect, you know, maybe we could do a little better upfront, letting, letting him know that, you know, because with the attendance, I'm just scratching the surface. I would love to see them go to all the events and do all that, but to start out with attendance.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, and I agree with what Councilwoman Bertani said, but also I think we gotta be careful. If this, we need to have some, you know, I mean, I've interviewed people for, you know, I've been on interview committees before. I think we have to have people that maybe didn't make it but on the waiting, so in case somebody is dismissed, we have somebody already waiting so we don't have to go through that whole process again. I think, you know, we need to streamline it. I think that's gonna be really important that we do that, so.
Councilwoman Panduro, please.
No, I agree, just being on the interview committee, I think that would really help, just having a waitlist of people. But also, when we, when we haven't interviewed planning commissioners, Councilmember Moy, and I have been very direct with you, your attendance is of vital importance and I think us continuing to do so, you know, just making sure that we're staying upfront and we're doing our part to make sure they understand that it is important and also explaining the attendance is gonna be key as well. Thank you.
Any other comments? I think we need to take a good look at compensation too. Councilman Tonison has been concerned about that. If it's still $35, then perhaps we need to raise that. And it might be a good idea to take a look at what other city planning commissioners are receiving today. $35 goes back to my era, that's a long time ago. Okay? So. Clear direction, Steph?
I think we have very clear direction. We'll come back with an ordinance draft as well as some research on compensation and we'll look at some other planning commission language in terms of absences and we'll bring you something that hopefully is workable for the council.
Thank you. Councilman Tonison, thank you for bringing the matter up. Thank you. We turn now to item 14, please, Madam Clerk.
Item 14, Harda Fairfield, review of downtown Fairfield's 2021 farmer's market. And our presenter is Dwayne Dahlman, Economic Development Manager.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. I'm here tonight to give a recap of this last year's farmer's market and then to get your input and direction for the market moving forward. So as you're aware, the market was held in downtown Fairfield on Texas Street and the highlighted areas show that we had the market on the 700 and 800 block of Texas Street. Just to give you a little, some specifics on the market itself, we contracted with an organization called Pacific Coast Farmers Market Association. Pacific Coast runs about 50 markets throughout the greater San Francisco Bay area. Our market was held this year on Thursday evenings from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. It started at the beginning of June and then ran till the end of September. We talked about before, that was on the two blocks of Texas Street. The farmer's market itself was located on the 700 block and then the 800 block we programmed for craft vendors and for service provider vendors and for city booths. One of the things I wanted to point out was we felt like we had a little bit less of a vendor count than we were hoping for. I think there were two main factors that contributed to that. The first was just COVID itself and that many of the vendors didn't have the number of staff, people that they had in previous years, which spread them thinner and didn't allow them to be at as many markets as they had in the past. And then I think the second factor was that because we were a little bit late going to Pacific Coast, they didn't have their typical outreach time to find vendors and so they had already passed that time. So many of the people that they were potentially gonna outreach to had already committed to other markets and then still viewed the Fairfield market as a new market. So, so those are the two kind of, I think, difficulties that they had finding vendors and filling up the block that they had. I think that was also kind of a, had an effect on attendance. So the surveys that Pacific Coast did showed we had about, I think, averaged 450 people that came to the market each week. We had more at the beginning and that kind of tapered off towards the end. And I also wanted to point out that in addition to attendance, some of the surveys that they did, they looked at how much the average person sent, spent at the market. And so those numbers were a little bit lower than what they wanted. And they also surveyed the number of booths that the people visited and those numbers were also lower. So I think moving forward, we want to increase the overall attendance at the market, we want to increase the amount of money that, that, you know, the people that come spend and the number of booths that they visit. So I wanted to get kind of your input on a couple of main items. The first is just the day of the week time of the market. So we had the market on Thursday evening, it went from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. So some of the feedback or some of the things to consider that, you know, typically if you have a farmer's market on a weekend, then that market is usually, you know, people that come to a weekend market are usually just there primarily for the, for the farmers themselves and for the food items. It's more of a traditional kind of market. Typically, if you have a farmer's market in the evening, then that's usually more of an event kind of market. So people are coming not only for the booths that you have there, but many times for, you know, other type of events that you have. And then you also typically see more prepared kind of food items sold. So one consideration for us would be, do we continue with the market on Thursday evenings? Or do we look at, you know, holding on a weekend? We talked before with the city council about difficulties. If we had it on a Saturday, that most of the vendors that they deal with wouldn't be able to make it on a Saturday. So I think the only other consideration was on a Sunday morning. The other thing that we received feedback on and we saw this with people that attended was, for the market that we had at 4:00 to 8:00, many people showed up early. I think looking at previous years, many people were showing up around 3:00. And, and we noticed that the attendance really dropped off starting around 7:00. So one suggestion is if we stay with Thursday evenings, to move back to the previous time of 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. The other thing we talked about is, is the. The other thing we talked about is, is the location of the market itself. Uh, with the new baller program that Pacific, that our public works department put in, we, we held it on the street itself. And so do we want to continue holding it on the, on Texas Street? Or would we look at moving it potentially back to where it was in the past, uh, over on the lawn? Another suggestion that came up was that, uh, we potentially, if we keep it on a Thursday evening, keep it on Texas Street, that we move the market itself to the 800 block of Texas Street. That would allow the 700 block, which is, is probably one of our more energized blocks with restaurants and businesses, um, to not have the farmer's market right there on their block. So, so we would, we could potentially move it to the 800 block. That would free up the 700 block for other type of activities. Uh, some downtowns that have, you know, um, I think, like Martinez has a similar situation. And on farmer market evenings, uh, their, their restaurants have, they close the street and their restaurants have moved their tables outside of the street. So one option we could think about would be to actually move the market to that block, to the 800 block, which frees up the 700 block to do more things there, um, and maybe not have as many conflicts with the businesses that are located on that block. Then the last thing to talk about would be programming. So if we were to keep the market on a Thursday evening, um, our thought is that, you know, given, given lead time, that we would like to have, you know, much more of a programming, uh, more programs, more events that go along with the farmer's market. And, and that's just an additional way to draw more people to come down on Thursday nights. So we would look at, you know, things like having more music, um, having that every week, and having a full calendar of kind of events, so that when people saw, okay, we have the farmer's market, this is the, this is the start and the end, people can look at every week, see something that's going on there in addition to the farmer's market. Similar to what we see with the other city events, uh, we could have more kids programs and kids events and things like that. So the thought is to, to create ways to program that, so that's an incentive for people to come down, bring their families, uh, and, and have those kind of activities as well as visit the farmer's market. So that concludes my presentation. I'm open for input or questions or input or feedback on these items, uh, so that we can, uh, go back to Pacific Coast or, or go forward with the market starting next year. One thing I failed to mention is that this year, we start in June, and so back to the day of the week time, uh, our recommendation would be to start the market in May, uh, which is a more typical time for starting a farmer's market.
Councilman Moy, please.
Thank you for the presentation. The question I have is, what do these numbers look like compared to the, the year before, um, before we made these wholesale changes? What, what do the numbers look like?
I don't know. I mean, we, the, so the previous year, we didn't have one because of the pandemic.
Right, because of the pandemic.
So, so before, um, uh, to be honest with you, I don't know the numbers for what that, what that was. I think one of the difficulties we had with, with the, um, with Main Street was just coming up with what, actually what those numbers were.
Oh, okay.
And kind of quantifying that.
So we, we don't have any idea?
So I don't know, I don't, I don't have a direct comparison of, you know, we had averaged 450 and they averaged a certain number.
How about the number of, um, providers out there?
I believe we had more providers.
Now?
Uh, now than they had. And our goal is to, you know, uh, we had room, we have a new room for another 30% to fill up a block.
Okay.
So we have room and part of our, our, our goal then is that by starting this process earlier, that, that then Pacific Coast to go out during their normal kind of, uh, period and, and, and request vendors, and, and we're on the map now. And so the thought is that we're going to build this up every year.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I think, um, I'm going to turn over to one of my colleagues, Councilman Tonison, because I know he's the downtown guy, and I know probably some of the feedback you must get from the merchants down there about, you know, where it should be and time and everything. So, Scott, I'm looking at you.
Sure. Um, yeah, so I have several questions and/or ideas, things to bounce off you. Um, and maybe this is a question for my colleagues, but what does success look like? What, what is that number? I mean, if, if I could get some feedback on numbers from similar towns on, on Thursdays, numbers on, because I don't know what is, is 400 people, 458 people, whatever that number, is that a good number?
I think, I think one of the ways that we were gauging success was, I mean, do you, are you filling up that, are you filling up that entire block with vendors? And so
Well, I would think that the merchants would gauge success a different way, is how many, how many people are going into their restaurants. But, you know, be that as it may, I think I'm just trying to present you with some, some questions or observations. Uh, what does success look like? Um, I don't know. I mean, I ran it for a number of years, I was on the board for a number of years. It's hard to tell where there's more people because the street's so long and the, the grass is so narrow, so I don't know what those numbers are. But maybe Pacific Coast, maybe they can go back and give us some numbers of what it was prior to, because I think the Main Street only gave it up for a couple of years. I'll, I'll try and be quick here. Uh, the, the days of the, the day of the week, I'd like to look at that. Ideas for timeframe, I've got that written down. Um, what, what is the length of time that it takes for a market to grow? Uh, you know, I know that some of these ones in Vallejo, somebody told me about one in Vallejo that started out very much like ours, and now they have 500, 1,000, 1,200 people. You know, what's the timeframe? And I'm, and I'm wanting you to maybe pair up with Pacific Coast to get some of this information. Um, sounds like they're very busy and we are low on their totem pole. Um, that's, that, that's my take on it. Advertising, are we sharing advertising with them? Um, and, and what is our demographic? Who are we advertising to? And then would we consider, I know we had considered, actually, we didn't consider, right when I started on Main Street, we were on the side street. And we didn't have those bollards, so maybe we could make use of the bollards on the side street. Something, something different, maybe even twice a month instead of every week. But just, just trying to gather some numbers that would, uh, give us a better idea. Thank you.
I was a pretty regular, and I found the farmer's market to be a, a place where people gathered because they wanted to socialize and they were patronizing the restaurants, in particular, the, the two Evelyn's and the ones across the street. But I think it might be worthwhile to spend some time surveying those people, those business people downtown and get their input as well. Because some of them were complaining that their businesses didn't matter anymore.
We did send out, so in the, in the downtown Pulse Newsletter, we sent out a survey back in September, October. Didn't get a lot of feedback from them. Uh, kind of, you know, but through our conversations, whether it was myself or with Debbie, who's, who was down there, um, it was kind of, you know, for, I think every business that was, that wanted improvements, we found a business that was happy. Um, so we could kind of, you know, one option would be to do more kind of door-to-door, go in and drop the survey off and say, what do you think exactly? There aren't that many businesses down there. Um, so that's something we could do to get their direct feedback and get a little more participation in that process.
Great. I think something good will come out of all of this. And one of the social aspects of the farmer's market, of course, is the friendships that people are making. And it's kind of interesting to see people who were by themselves, and now all of a sudden, they're joining others. And I think several of us have been there when we were able to participate in, in those kinds of things. Councilman Moy, you, you had a very keen observation. Want to share that, please, with the ladies, the two elderly ladies who were sitting there?
I don't remember what I observed. Maybe you can tell, remind me. Yeah. Well, I loved it that you brought somebody and I saw people I haven't seen for a long time in the area. And so, you know, that was a personal thing with me, but, um, yeah.
Anyway, it's a great concept, but we just need to continue to refine it year after year and learn from our mistakes and make those improvements that are necessary. But people do love to buy the food, and particularly the barbecued chicken, and, and then they will sit there, or they'll bring the pizza out from Evelyn's. It's a wonderful experience, and I thoroughly enjoyed it. Okay? Any other comments?
Councilman Bertoni, please.
I'd like to see it happen on Saturday. Because Saturdays are when people are off. A lot of people who live here don't work here. And by the time they get back here, it's over. Or they're too tired, you know, and they go home and do what they got to do. Um, so, so i- i- is it possible to drill down a little deeper on what it would, what it would take to get the farmer's market here on a Saturday morning? Because I, I, I don't, Sunday, I don't think we have a shot on Sunday. Competing with church and the NFL and, you know, the NBA, I mean, it's just, it's, it's tough. And it's the day before people go back to work. But to have a robust presence downtown, I think, I think we, we, we need to look at Saturday and what it would, what it would take to make Saturday happen.
So we can, uh, when we initially talked to Pacific Coast, their concern was that, okay, if we start a market here in Fairfield or restart it on a Saturday, their concern was that there, that there were too many vendors that were already going to places like Vallejo and, and around us, that they thought, you know, wouldn't be able to go to the Fairfield market, go to two or three markets on the same day, and many of those were on Saturday. Um, but now that we've had it for a year, you know, they, I, they've said they'd be able to go out and directly survey the, the vendors and say, okay, if we did it on Saturday, how many of you could make it, how many of you couldn't? And so if those numbers are, are equal to or as good as what we had, you know, for this market, then, then we can find out if that's an option for us.
Are you suggesting that there are vendors who would prefer to go to Vallejo over Fairfield?
Well, I think, I mean
I'm kidding. But really, I mean, you know, I, I think we should take a look and, 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 you know, because people in Fairfield love to be downtown on the weekend. I mean, give, give them a reason to be there, they'll show up. So, yeah, I think it would be worth our while to take a, another look at that and see what the feasibility of that is.
Okay. And we can, we can directly, we can work directly with Pacific Coast on that.
Thank you.
Counselor, Madam Panduro, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I myself also attended a couple of times, and I was really pleased with just the overall, um, the way that it ended up. But I, I really liked the idea of making it an event and adding like a program calendar to it, because especially if we do end up on a Saturday, it'd be really great to have it be a place for families to go and spend some time downtown. And not just in the shops and vendors, but, you know, we have that great piece of grass and we have all this space, like, let's utilize the, the space as best as possible so that people can come out and, and truly enjoy being downtown. So not just the draw, getting the fruit, individuals are getting them there, but then it's everything else that's keeping them there for, for, you know, for more than just 10 minutes or so. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Try to add more performing groups. The dancers are, are wonderful. The Sharp Academy, all of those opportunities present themselves. And that leads then to trying to use the old space, the green space. So, give it some thought, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Mayor, I do have one person that would like to speak. Mr. Wood.
Cornelius. Okay. Oh, thank you.
Good evening, folks. I guess you all know me. My name is Cornelius Wood, and I happen to live in the area where you're talking about. And I find it quite offending to block off the street. I think that the place where you had it before on that green was much more amenable to the people's feet, the kids playing, and the overall spontaneity of the event, of the place. And putting it on that asphalt street, I do not think it enhances it at all. As far as the day of the week, where are the others and what time are they? We don't want to be in competition, direct competition with them. Figure out what day is, you know, if, if Thursday's fine, it's fine. The hours, I can agree with moving it forward a little bit. But anyway, the object of a farmer's market is to sell produce and sell things that the farmers bring. I'm in favor of the fact that people might want to go to a restaurant afterwards, but I don't think that should be our main focus. I should be attracting, we should be trying to attract people that want to sell their produce there and people who want to buy it, and presenting them with a place that's convenient and easier to work on. We all know that walking on grass is a lot easier than walking on asphalt. And for the people out of downtown who live in that area, I don't think you really want to present them with an inconvenience, like blocking off the street. I don't know where that idea came from. I just don't favor it. That's all I got to say. Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you. Any final comments? Counselman Moy, please.
What about Sussun Cities? What, have we thought about maybe joining with them? When, when, when is theirs? I know, is it Fridays? I forget when, or maybe the weekend. I can't remember, because I've been to it once, but, um, but what about, because we're so close, maybe working with them?
I haven't, I haven't connected with Sussun City. I could, I could look into
I don't know, just throwing it out there.
Okay.
Um, you know, because I think they had a hard time finding a place for it for a while. And if we have the space and we can draw the people from Sussun City as well, that might be something to think about. I, I don't know. I don't know if they'd be amenable, but just, just something to think about.
Everybody from Sussun City is welcome to attend our farmer's market every single week.
Absolutely.
And patronize our businesses as well.
Absolutely. [laughing]
City manager, any other quick comments? Good. Let's go on then to item number 15, please.
Um, I need to check with Brian. Brian, is there anyone on Zoom that wants to speak on item 14?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and check in here. And feel free to use the raise your hand feature if any one of our Zoom participants would like to speak on this item. And seeing none, I think we have no speakers.
Okay, thank you.
We turn now to item number 15, please.
Mayor, uh, not to prolong that too long, um, just to set some expectations, what we'll do is we'll reengage with specific. I think what we heard was, let's look at, uh, the possibility of Saturday. Uh, we will do that, um, and then we'll come back to council, um, here, uh, probably at the January meeting, um, and, uh, give you some answers to what they say, um, as well as some of the plans and for the building out that calendar, if that works.
And, Dwayne, I just wanted to say thank you. I mean, I, I saw you down there working hard, going from business to business, and you really put in a good effort. I know you and Debbie worked well together, and I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
Item 15, Madam Clerk, please.
Item 15, Resolution 2021 dash 303 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, eliminating term limits for the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Advisory Committee, Gulf Advisory Board, Rockville Hills Regional Park Citizen Advisory Committee and Youth Commission. And our presenter is, again, our acting city manager, David Gasway.
Yes, thank you. Very similar to the, um, item regarding planning commission. This was at the request of Councilmember Tonison that this would come, and the mayor graciously agreed to put this on. Uh, currently, we have six commissions or committees. Uh, only the planning commission and Measure P committee do not have term limits, and so the request was for a conversation of council of whether or not, uh, those term limits should be removed. Um, uh, different from, uh, planning commission attendance, uh, this can be set by resolution of the council, so we have given you a draft resolution if you wanted to take action tonight. And I'll turn it over to, uh, Councilman Tonison.
Yes, thank you, uh, Mr. City Manager. Yeah, the, um, unlike the, the planning commission, some of these, some of these committees just, they just don't have the, the folks that, they're not standing in line. So when I was on the planning commission, I was the liaison for the Rockville Hills Park Advisory Committee. Um, and as, I sat on that for, I think, three or four years, but they were all termed out, and nobody knew it. So all I wanted to do was bring it to the mayor's attention to, you know, just, just clean it up a little bit, because, uh, the Gulf Advisory Board, you, you know, sometimes you don't have a lot of people that want to be on that, although Pam's probably inspired a few people tonight. But, um, but anyways, I was just more or less looking at cleaning that up and, uh, keeping it in line with the planning commission and the, uh, Measure P. Thank you.
Comments? Reactions? All agreeing?
I'm okay with them.
Okay.
Public comment?
Reactions? All agreeing?
I'm okay with them.
Okay.
Public comment?
Yep. We're all agreeing that we'll get rid of the term limits. Okay?
Okay, I don't have any cards for peak, for speaker cards. Brian, do you have anyone on Zoom that wants to speak on item 15?
And we have no requests to speak at this time.
Thank you.
Okay. So you have-
Who made the motion?
There, there's a resolution before you that would do this-
I'll make that motion.
Okay. So moved by Councilman Tonison, seconded by Councilwoman Moy. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. We turn now to public hearings.
Public hearing, item 16. Public Hearing and Resolution 2021-295 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, Adopting an Amendment to the Train Station Specific Plan, SP 2021-002. And our presenter is May Lee Sheehan, our senior planner.
Sorry about that. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and those of you hanging in tonight with us. I'm going to open up my presentation, and we'll get started. All right, so, before jumping straight into the amendments tonight, I wanted to give just some overall project details of the train station specific plan. The specific plan is a diverse plan with a history that traces back about 10 years. It was approved by City Council in July of 2011. Concurrently, the council also certified an environmental impact report that evaluated the entire planning area for resource impacts such as traffic, air quality, noise, biological habitat, and various other resources. The specific plan itself provides a broad framework for the overall development of the area, including land use designations, residential densities, infrastructure, and recreational features. In 2018, the train station officially named Tom, Tom, excuse me, Hannigan Fairfield Vacaville Train Station, was opened at the southeast corner of Peabody Road and Vanden Road. And while plans for the train station were underway, developers worked with city staff to bring on Planning Area 4, which is better known as the One Lake Community. This planning area contains a mix of low, medium, and high-density residential development. There's also a retail village core and an approximately 22-acre lake park. That park is currently under construction, the lake is there, filled with water, it's beautiful. If any of you haven't had the chance to see it, I'd recommend going out. And then most recently, the Planning Commission approved master development entitlements for Planning Area 5, which is essentially an extension of Planning Area 4, and it adds additional residential units and recreational amenities. So although the two planning areas are separated, they are greatly integrated through the road network, pedestrian bicycle pathways, and various private and public recreational amenities that are all maintained by a singular homeowners association. So unsurprisingly, the applicant for Planning Area 5 is also the master developer for Planning Area 4. Here we have a contextual map of the northeast area of Fairfield. You've got some major roadways highlighted in red text, Air Base Parkway at the bottom of the page, Cement Hill Road, Peabody Road, and Vanden Road. You have for just some landmarks of the area, Vanden High School, Golden West Middle, Travis Air Force Base, that kind of bleeds off the page, Gary Falati Park, and a handful of different industrial users as well. So this transparent overlap shows the train station specific plan area, so everything that's in color there, the red star being our brand-new train station. And you can also see Planning Area 4, as I mentioned, this is the One Lake Community that's currently under construction, and Planning Area 5, which was recently entitled by the Planning Commission at the end of October. So now that we have some groundwork covered, I'm going to focus a little on Planning Area 5, as that's the project that's triggering the specific plan amendments for tonight. Quick overview, there are essentially five components to facilitate this development, the first being the train station specific plan amendments, which I have on another slide, and I will get into those details. The Master Plan Unit Development Permit, or MPUD Permit, this permit provides the framework for the planning area, so it goes over the residential densities, the infrastructure construction, and various other components that are consistent with the specific plan. The tentative subdivision map creates all the recreational spaces, all the different residential lots, and the associated infrastructure. The development review highlights the overall landscape plan, park concepts, and community design plan. And the environmental review ensures that the mitigation measures outlined in the specific plan's environmental impact report are implemented. So in late October, Planning Commission approved items 2 through 5, and they recommended that City Council approve item number 1. So without further ado, I have all of the specific plan amendments on this slide. I apologize for the text, I know it's a lot to look at. So the applicant has requested several amendments, essentially to reflect current day circumstances, provide flexibility in the methodology of achieving our specific plan goals, and ultimately to facilitate the Planning Area 5 development. These proposed amendments are consistent with the intent of the specific plan and the environmental impact report. Within Chapter 4, Policy 4-14 outlines regulations regarding a potential City of Vacaville water treatment site that was initially proposed for Planning Area 5. So here on the map, you see that big purple square in the center of Planning Area 5, that was a potential site for Vacaville. Vacaville no longer needs the facility in this location, and that land has been sold. So the amendment proposal would just update the language to prevent, reflect current day Chapter 4 also has several policies that require the master plan unit development application for Planning Area 5 to be simultaneously submitted with Planning Area 6 and Planning Area 7. So right now, it asks that all three of those planning areas come on board at the same time. Here's quick graphic. Planning Area 6 is slated for industrial development, and Planning Area 7 is the Great Park, which we recently named the Matt Garcia Community Park. And so for Planning Area 6, it was once owned by the same entity that controls Planning Area 4 and 5, but the ownership has since changed hands, to which our city attorneys have concluded that city and staff cannot require Planning Area 5 property owners to develop and plan another landowner's property. And as far as Planning Area 7 goes, it's largely owned by the city, and staff has recently initiated planning for that future Matt Garcia Community Park. So the revision to these policies would eliminate the requirement for all those planning areas to be submitted at the same time, and would allow for Planning Area 5 to move forward on its own. Cleanup revisions are proposed for several policies in Chapter 9, and this is regarding a future fire station, number 39. The existing development agreement between the City of Fairfield and the Planning Area 4 and 5 developers did initially state that the trains, or sorry, the fire station was their responsibility to acquire a site, design the station, and construct. However, the, I'm sorry, I don't know how I jumped to the end there, excuse me. However, the city's fire and police works, uh, public works department would prefer to have greater control over the site design and construction, and we have made amendments in the development agreement as such. So this proposal would just clean up the train station specific plan policy to match our development agreement terms. And then minor revisions are proposed for Chapters 7, 10, and 12. These revisions are not quite as notable as the ones I just covered, so I won't go into depth on them, but they can be reviewed in your Exhibit A of the staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have on them. And lastly, I would like to note that there was one amendment request that staff was unable to recommend at this time. Policy 4-16 requires that the developer construct a road between Vanden, which is the red dotted line there, and Peabody, which is the yellow-orange dotted line. The developer has requested that that policy be deleted from the plan, and while the city can consider this request, the process for determining if the developer can be relieved of this obligation requires additional traffic analysis, and that analysis has not been completed at this time. Because the developer would like to move forward with their Planning Area 5 applications, staff is not recommending that this policy be deleted. We are stating that the request can be considered separately and at a later date after additional traffic analysis has been provided, to show that the Planning Area 5 development can move forward without this road segment. And so with that, staff is recommending that the council adopt Resolution 2021-295. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any comments or questions? Excellent presentation, thank you very much. Any speakers?
You need to open the public hearing, but I do not have any speakers.
So we'll close the public hearing, bring it back for council action.
Did we have anyone on Zoom?
I was just going to ask. Brian, do we have anyone on Zoom that would like to speak on item 16?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and check in here. If any one of our participants would like to speak on this item, feel free to use the raise your hand feature at this time. And seeing none, I think we have no speakers at this time. Thank you.
We'll close the public hearing, bring it back for council action. Motion to approve? Moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilwoman Retani. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. We turn to item number 17, please, Madam Clerk.
Item 17, Public Hearing and Resolution 2021-296 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, Approving Required Findings Relating to the Amendment of the 2019 California Building Code, also known as Chapter 5 Building and Housing Code of the City of Fairfield Municipal Code. And First Reading and Introduction of Ordinance 2021-23 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, Amending Chapter 5 of the City of Fairfield Municipal Code to Adopt and Amend Appendix 10 of the California Residential Code, Emergency Housing. And our presenter is Jeff Thomas, our chief building official.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. As you all are aware, the city has a declared shelter crisis, and this proposed amendment to Chapter 5 of the Fairfield Municipal Code will adopt and amend an appendix in the Building Standards Commission in the Residential Building Code that will provide minimum life safety requirements for emergency housing. These additional options provide for reducing minimum sleeping size for sleeping quarters. One project that the city has been looking at in association with the Homeless Services Division are pallet structures. They are prefabricated structures that have a square footage of 64 square feet or 103 square feet. One of the 103-square-foot size currently does not meet the minimum code requirements. So one of the recommended proposals to amend that appendix is to reduce that room size to 100 square feet to allow for two residents to stay in a 103-square-foot pallet-type structure. These will also allow for tiny home-type structures, similar to maybe like a tough shed, that would provide the city with additional options to help alleviate some of the housing crisis that we have. Moving forward, the council will be presented with options regarding the pallet structures, and I believe zoning amendments for allowing these structures at coming meetings. And that is the end of my presentation.
Any comments or questions for Jeffrey? I will open the public hearing, please. Any requests to speak? Cards, Madam Clerk?
I don't have any requests to speak. Brian, is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak on item 17?
We have no requests to speak at this time.
Thank you.
We'll close the public hearing, bring it back for council action. Then moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilwoman Moy. All in favor?
Mr. Mayor, price, just to be clear, this is approval of a Resolution 2021-296, and it's also a motion to waive the full reading and read by title only, and since it's an ordinance, you need to read the title. It's Ordinance 2021-23 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, Amending Chapter 5 of the City of Fairfield Municipal Code to Adopt and Amend Appendix 10 of the California Residential Code, Emergency Housing. Is that the motion?
So your motion again, please.
Make a motion.
And seconded by Councilwoman Moy. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Jeffrey, thank you for your first presentation.
Thank you.
Well done, sir.
Item 18, Public Hearing and Resolution 2021-297 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, Annexing Territory, Pacific Ocean Storage to Community Facilities District Number 2012-2, Public Safety Services, Open Space Operation, and Park Maintenance as Annexation Number 54, Authorizing the Levy of a Special Tax Within the Annexed Territory, and Submitting the Levy of a Special Tax to the Qualified Electors Thereof. And Resolution 2021-298 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, Declaring the Results of a Special Annexation Election in Territory Annex to Community Facilities District Number 2012-2, Public Safety Services, Open Space Operation, and Park Maintenance, Determining the Validity of Prior Proceedings and Directing Recording of Amended Notice of Special Tax Lean for City of Fairfield Community Facilities District Number 2012-2, Public Safety Services, Open Space Operation, and Park Maintenance, Annexation Number 54, Pacific Ocean Storage. And our presenter is Chris Lewis, Public Works Management Analyst.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Chris Lewis, Management Analyst with the Department of Public Works. Before you tonight is Annexation Number 54 for CFD 2012-2. This district provides funding for Public Safety Services, Open Space Operations, and Park Maintenance throughout the city. The territory proposed for annexation is located in Grobrick Court, and once constructed, the development will be a commercial vehicle storage and parking lot. City Council initiated this annexation process for this territory on November 2nd with the adoption of Resolution 2021-259. And by conducting the public hearing tonight, carrying out the ballot, ballot procedure, and adopting the resolutions before you, council will complete the annexation process, and the territory will be added to the district. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Any questions for Chris? Okay. I will open the public hearing.
I have no comments, public comments. Brian, do you have anyone on Zoom that would like to speak on item 18?
We have no requests to speak at this time.
Thank you.
So the action this evening will be adopting Resolution 2021-297, and also 2021-298.
Just the first one, as I have to then open the ballot. So can someone make a motion for Resolution 2021-297?
Councilman Tonison makes the motion, and then seconded by Councilwoman Panduro. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Okay, and now I'll open the ballot. And we have two yes votes in favor of annexation.
It's a go.
So the motion would now be to approve Resolution 2021-298?
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilman Tonison, seconded by Councilwoman Panduro. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Item number 19, Madam Clerk, please. Chris, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 19, Public Hearing and Resolution 2021-299 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, Annexing Territory, Monte Verde, to Community Facilities District Number 2012-2, Public Safety Services, Open Space Operation, and Park Maintenance, as Annexation Number 55, Authorizing the Levy of a Special Tax Within the Annexed Territory, and Submitting the Levy of a Special Tax to the Qualified Electors Thereof. And Resolution 2021-300 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, Declaring the Results of a Special Annexation Election in Territory Annex to Community Facilities District Number 2012-2, Public Safety Services, Open Space Operation, and Park Maintenance, Determining the validity, validity of prior proceedings and directing recording of amended notice of special tax lean for City of Fairfield Community Facilities District Number 2012-2, Public Safety Services, Open Space Operation, and Park Maintenance, Annexation Number 55, Monte Verde. And again, our presenter is Chris Lewis, Public Works Management Analyst.
Good evening, Mayor- Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council again. Chris Lewis, Management Analyst with the Department of Public Works. Before you tonight is Annexation Number 55 for CFD 2012-2. This district provides funding for Public Safety Services, Open Space Operation, and Park Maintenance throughout the city. The territory proposed for annexation is located east of Peabody Road, south of Dobie Road, and north of Air Base Parkway. And once constructed, the development will be 124 single-family lots, residential lots. City Council initiated this annexation process for this territory on November 2nd with the adoption of Resolution 2021-260. And by conducting the public hearing tonight, carrying out the ballot procedure, and adopting the proposed resolutions before you, council will have completed the annexation process, and the territory will be added to the district. Thank you.
Any comments or questions for Chris? We'll open the public hearing.
I have no requests to speak. Brian, do you have anyone on Zoom that would like to speak on Item 19?
We have no requests to speak at this time.
Thank you.
We'll close the public hearing, bring it back for council action, please. Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 2021-299. It's been moved by the Vice Mayor. Is there a second, please? Seconded by Councilwoman Britani. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. And then we turn to--
And now I will open the ballot. And there are five yes votes in favor of annexation.
Entertain a motion then to approve. It's been moved by Councilwoman Panduro, seconded by Councilwoman Moyer. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Okay, item 20, Public Hearing and Resolution 2021-301 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, finding the proposed annexation ANX 2020-001 of approximately 8.07 acres located off of Pittman Road, APN 0044-080-160, and 0044-080-170, consistent with the city's general plan and municipal service review, and requests the Solano Local Agency Formation Commission, LAFCO, to initiate proceedings for the reorganization of territory. And again, our presenter is Maylie Sheehan, Senior Planner.
Thank you. I think that's it. I think Karen just wrapped my whole presentation right there. Thank you. All right, I'll repeat all of it, sorry. So the project is located on the west side of Pittman Road, south of Link Road and north of Cordelia Road. The proposed annexation is made up of two properties totaling approximately 8.07 acres. Currently, there is an existing single-family residence and some ancillary structures on the site, however, the vast majority of the site is vacant. Contextual map here, the red star is our annexation site. So again, you have Pittman Road is the main road, Cordelia is across, and you have Interstate 80, and across that way is the Safeway Shopping Center and the Cordelia Library, to give you a little idea of where in the city we are. From a land use perspective, the annexation area has pre-assigned commercial service zoning and general plan designations. Brief overview of the annexation process. Separate entity, the Solano Local Agency Formation Commission, or LAFCO, is the governing body that ultimately holds public hearings, puts conditions, and approves and processes the annexation. However, it is the city's responsibility to look at the annexation and ensure that we have the proper utilities and services to take on that property. Very simply put, an annexation is a process of incorporating land into a new jurisdiction. In this instance, the property would go from Solano County to City of Fairfield. The property is within our sphere of influence, or our, it needs, we need to confirm that it is within our sphere of influence, and that is consistent with our general plan and municipal service review. Additionally, the property needs to have pre-zoning. Our municipal service review does identify the site as an annexation site within the city's planned growth areas. So I got a little ahead of myself earlier. The property is within our city's sphere of influence. It is consistent with our municipal service review and general plan. The properties are both pre-zoned CS or commercial service. At this time, there is no development proposed. The applicant is simply looking to annex the property into our jurisdiction, and will come back in the future with a development proposal. So a pitcher always says a thousand words. Here is exactly what is being proposed tonight. The left image shows the two properties that are outside of our jurisdiction, the blue dotted line. The request is simply to move that blue dotted line and bring these two properties into our city. Wrapping up, the proposed annexation has been found exempt per California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA guidelines, under two sections. The first section specifically states that annexation areas can be exempt if the development that is existing on the site is either more restrict, or excuse me, the language is a little tricky, let me read it exactly. "The existing private uses and structures that are developed to the density allow the current zoning or pre-zoning of either the gaining or losing jurisdiction, whichever is more restrictive, can be exempt if utility services can provide the existing facility." So a lot of language there because it's SEQA. But when you break it down, it's fairly straightforward. What it's asking is, does the annexation area have any existing structures? Yes, it does, there is an existing single-family home and some ancillary structures. And if there are structures there, is the density permitted by either the city or the county, whichever is more restrictive? In this instance, it is permitted by the county under an agriculture zoning, which would be more restrictive than our commercial service zoning. And so therefore, in this instance, it could be exempted under that section of SEQA. The second section that the project can be exempted from SEQA states that if the proposed project has no potential to have a significant environmental impact, it can be exempt. Because there is no current development proposed, there is no potential significant environmental impact at this time, and therefore, this annexation request can be exempt. So with that, staff is recommending that council adopt Resolution 2021-301.
Any comments or questions for our presenter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back. Open the public hearing, any requests to speak? Cards, Madam Clerk?
I have no cards. Brian, do you have anyone on Zoom that would like to speak on Item 20?
We have no speakers, but we do have Carrie Watt from Meadow Creek Group is in attendance if there are any questions.
Okay, thank you.
That is our applicant.
We'll close the public hearing, then bring it back for council action. Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 2021-301. It's been moved by Councilwoman Tim, seconded by Councilwoman Moyer. All in favor? Motion passed this evening, I say. Thank you very much. Return to our final item, that's item number 21, please.
Item 21, Continued Public Hearing and Resolution 2021-302 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, terminating the existing location agreement and operations covenant agreement with Fairfield Automotive Partners LLC, thereby terminating the sales tax sharing economic development incentive for BMW of Fairfield, and approving a new location agreement and operations covenant with Fairfield Automotive Partners LLC, providing day minimus fee waivers as defined by California Labor Code Section 1720, and authorizing the city to reimburse developer for public serving improvements required by the city, and authorizing the directing and directing the city manager to take all actions necessary to execute the agreement, including a supplemental appropriation of intergovernmental loan funds to pay reimbursable costs for public improvements. And our presenter again is Acting City Manager David Gasway.
Thank you very much. I'll back cleanup, read in the room, I'll be quite quick. So back in February, you agreed to a five-year sales tax reimbursement agreement as an economic incentive for BMW of Fairfield. They're up and running in their temporary location, getting ready to break ground on their permanent location. They've contacted us and asked to restructure the deal, so $403,970 would instead come in the form of fee waivers, and $502,853 would instead come in the form of reimbursements out of the intergovernmental loan fund. In effect, it's a $900,000 incentive on the front end, as opposed to a five-year sales tax rebate that we estimated would have been about $1.8 million in total economic incentive. Staff recommends that we would do this, as it reduces the amount of incentive that we offer, and still causes BMW of Fairfield to move forward on their new building. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Questions for David? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Any requests to speak?
I don't have any speaker cards. Brian, do you have anyone online that would like to speak on Item 21?
We have no requests to speak at this time.
Thank you.
Then I will close the public hearing and bring it back for council action. Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 2021-302, moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilwoman Britani. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We are adjourned until December 21st. Thank you very much, an arduous day. Thank you. Good night.